Thank you for joining us this evening for the June 12th, 2025, Montessorino Better Streets Commission Regular Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist the commission, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For today's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this Better Streets Commission Regular Meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and race can. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a commissioner speak, member speaking. Please use race hand to be recognized by the chair and then able to the, enable to speak to the commission. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the race hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lasted when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by.
Okay, we'll put the meeting call to order at seven o'clock. Any changes to the orders of the day, any requests to change the agenda? Okay, please, can you go ahead and do the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bill Law.
Present.
Commissioner Wayne.
Present.
Commissioner Kirkford. Here yet, Commissioner Zebba.
Present.
And Chair Sheen.
Present.
Thank you. Do we have anybody wanting to speak on the line?
Um, for or. Yeah.
And are there any written communications that have come in since you sent on the agenda?
Not, no.
Okay. Unfinished business, we have any?
We don't believe we have any.
Okay, approve the minutes of the last Better Streets Commission meeting? Did everybody have time to take a quick look at them? Would somebody like to make a motion that we approved the minutes? Motion to approve?
All seconded.
All right, thank you.
Would you like to open for public comment?
Oh, yes.
Right, or keep it?
Yes.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. And no written communication either. All right, next, number two is goals and priorities. I asked, somebody asked.
Oh, we got a vote on the minutes.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
You beat me too.
Sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, it just the votes on the, you guys have a motion and a second for the meeting minutes? And can you guys just raise? If you.
Maybe do it all.
Yeah.
Both.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right. Sorry about that, sorry. Thank you. Goals and priorities. So I suggested we put this in on the agenda, so at least we have a chance to talk about it and see if anybody wants to have any specific, suggest we have any specific priorities. Historically, we've primarily been reactive, although there was a time period where we had Highway nine as kind of priority. We had on the agenda every meeting. But we eventually figured out it was beyond our control and sort of gave up on it. So I just wanted to have an open discussion and see if anybody had any thoughts or comments on this. I really don't have anything specific myself.
Well, I haven't given up. I would like to see the median vegetation way reduced. You know, there are AB eucalyptus and it's, they drop branches, the, the whole trees fall from time to time and block the roadway. There was one on, I think, the Las Gattan's Instagram recently that in the middle of the night is totally blocked. And the firefighters come out and clear it really quick, so we don't always know. But I'd love to get a report from the fire department to find out how often does Highway nine get blocked by trees? You know, whole trees, branches, et cetera. Because I think we could potentially make an argument that it needs to be a little bit better managed. Especially since that and Winchester are only evacuation route. I don't know if you had in mind vegetation management or something else, but that's what.
That's not what we, we were talking more about the sidewalk and.
Oh, I care about that, too.
Is that something that? I guess we can agendaize and talk about it and request that we see, you know, what kind of resources are available?
What do you think about that?
Yeah.
Contacting fire?
Yeah. Definitely, we can do that for sure. And then I do know that this is a concern of the council and several members of the committee, so. You know, maintaining the streets for not just the evacuation routes, but regular usage also, I think, would fall under the oversight of this commission, too.
That's true, is regular usage that incident I referred to where the tree fell the middle of the night the other day, there was no weather. You know, it's a pleasant day, so it's not just an emergency situation, it's day-to-day traffic.
Sort of along those lines, so. The weird monasterie that actually owns a motorhome. I think the streets are supposed to be cleared up to like twelve or thirteen feet of wrenches and there's definitely a lot of places where they're in pot. And you feel it when you're driving, big motorhome around. So I don't know if that's under our purview.
I'm, I'm curious to learn, with Darrell's absence and a kind of a plan to resurface streets, how are we addressing evaluation of streets and when they're going to be resurfaced?
So there, there's a whole process for that. And I believe it's about every five years, there is an updated report that is prepared in, by a consultant, but in partnership with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which is a major area-wide transportation agency. So, and that is happening this year. So like I said, I think it's about every five years that that happens. And then that gives us the PCI conditions of all the road segments within the city. And then we plan, the consultant also helps with cost estimating of the repair work, the type of repair work and the cost of it. That's needed for each segment. And then the prioritization is, again, the consultant helps with that. In general, it's the lower PCI, streets are the higher priority with some, there's also a recommendation or requirement that there are some streets with a higher PCI index that we still maintain with crack sealing or other lighter measures that maintains the quality of the street for longer, so they don't degrade as quickly. So it's kind of a mix of the lower PCIs as the first priority with a mix of some of the better conditions and kind of patching them to have them last longer. And so then our consulting city engineer is on the line, she can certainly add to this. But she is working with a consultant that is preparing that report right now. And then from that, we will develop a five-year plan for the street.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that helps me understand things better. And, and in relationship to that plan, does that plan get published and is there an opportunity for public comment where we would have a role in that?
Um, what we would bring to you is the five-year plan that, that the, that comes out of that report. So you would have an opportunity to comment on how the order that we're taking the projects in and if you'd like to see something.
And then do we make a recommendation to the city council to adopt?
Well, correct.
Okay, and I would say that's come before us every year, that's something that we normally will look at, it's, that's not anything new. Okay, yeah, and I, I think the temporary engineer went over it in some detail just at our last meeting, if I remember correctly.
And another potential goal is that pretty.
Yeah.
Finish on. So the city's starting to talk about, you know, improving wildfire safety, so some of that's been certainly by city council and such. I'm wondering, it would be interesting to know when the city was laid out and the initial road network was built. Kind of if they had any future planning at that time for adding roads or just kind of the vision of the original layout and where it might evolve to. Because I suspect we haven't added a road in a long time and we've had increased population and pressure on the road network. And we may need to at some point add additional roads connecting search and routes for evacuation safety. So if we have any ability to look historically, it might be a good piece to start with. Do, do we know when the roads were laid out? I mean, I know you weren't with the city yet.
So the city was incorporated in nineteen fifty-seven and pretty much everything was, was here already.
Yeah.
And any new streets would be the subject of the map acts, you know, a developer would, for example, submit a plan for approval by the county and then ultimately that gets him part of the world development process, right?
Correct, and commonly in, in cities that have larger subdivisions than, than we see here in Montessorino. Then sort of typical practice for, for quite some time now is for the new streets to be private streets. The maintenance cost, long-term maintenance cost is, is quite a bit for cities, so when there is a, oftentimes when there is a new development, cities will require the new streets to be private streets and maintained by the homeowners association.
And, and does the city have a role in that or is that strictly county?
The city would, if it's within the city's incorporated boundary. So certainly not a circulation road in any way, but that is the case of, we did have Seaboard Court. There are a couple lots up here, which serves the three houses right off of Highway nine, and that's the case, that is a private road. And in the future, it would be maintained by the three property owners.
Very cool.
Thank you.
There are several roads in that development by the hacienda that I.
Yes, those are all private streets, too, yes, better example.
Thank you. And for the public streets, the original streets, we, do we just own basically the asphalt or is there any easement? Is, is a private property right where the asphalt ends or do we own a band on either side?
It's a little different on each street, so we, there isn't really a standard. Again, since most of the subdivisions that were done were with the county, there wasn't, you know, really a city standard of the width of the right of way, so with each street it is different, but it's generally a little past the asphalt. But how much is, is different for each street?
So any research, you'd go to the county, sounds like.
Or this, the subdivision maps, we do have, we do have some records. It might show that, but to actually lay it out in the field, you would need a surveyor. And we can tell you on a map what the width of the right of way is, but exactly where those lines lay out.
It might be difficult to go back seventy years, sixty years to try to figure out sort of what the intent was at the time. And certain things have changed quite a bit, but given how the city is really built out, I mean, there is a whole lot of opportunity absent buying private property to put in new roads or new accesses.
Right, or if for emergency purposes, it'd have to be emergency easements connecting probably existing roads for the most part.
Which would probably require some sort of embedded domain, which is not going to be a primary one.
Necessarily.
Or an easement would.
Yeah, we talked about the pedestrian easement between, what is it, Rose to Viewfield, is that right? We talked about that in the past, there's that lot that is contiguous to those streets.
I actually think, then again, this will be someday, if anybody proposes a development on that project, that we'll have to have a survey to determine specifically, but based on the subdivision maps, it looks like that parcel might be just shy of Viewfield.
Oh, really?
Right of way and that two parcels next to it.
Yeah, I wonder, so those houses are just kind of angle at that corner there, yeah.
That's how it appears.
Right.
Complicating that issue.
Yeah, it's something, I think it's something with those lot owners as well. But I would be up for, you know, emergency access roads and stuff like that, I think is important, not survey a site where we might want to explore further.
One thing we noticed when we were looking at Bruce in detail was there's a lot of people have developed that property into the city's easement, onto Bruce.
Interesting.
That's just an, an interesting thing right now, but that sort of thing happens, that there's a lot of gardens and things that are actually inside an easement owned by the city.
Have we taken a proactive steps to grant permission for that, so there's no.
Claims.
Prescriptive rights acquired over time, I don't, I don't believe that that would happen within the city's easement, but I don't know.
Correct, I, my, my limited understanding of the subjects is, that is definitely true on Bruce as well as some other areas of the city because without sort of a sidewalk curb and gutter, it isn't really clear where, you know, the right of way may be and somebody's, you know, probably that they're responsible for maintaining ends. We don't approve permits for work within the city's right of way. Someday, if it would need to be a widening of the road or perhaps a sidewalk or a gutter installed, the property owners may be required to remove some of their improvements that are in the right of way, but until that's the case, we, we really haven't been making people get their improvements out of the right of way or something.
But I think we should, we should be cognizant of the fact that if we don't act in some way, shape, or form by way of consent, if nothing else, prescriptive rights will be acquired over time and the process that you just described will be impossible, there is. That's my answer.
We can look into.
Yeah, it might be.
You just give consent, that's all you have to do.
Yeah, you give permission, then they can get prescriptive rights.
They have not already, to be sure. Something for Kirsten?
So I've only got two things so far that we want to look at down the road, and that is vegetation in Highway nine and vegetation over the streets in general, is that what you mean above the, yeah, above the streets? I've got a couple more things, but they're some ways silly, just relating to walkability of the city. What's important, I don't have a dog, but I, on my street, I see a lot of people walking dogs and I think it'd be kind of cool, maybe even just on a test program, to get a dog waste disposal with it. But I've talked to a lot of dog owners and they would really like that. And it does seem like it would make it nicer. And I think that you know, one, one way the city could, could implement this would be to get one, ask for volunteers, find the homeowner to volunteers and in exchange, say, hey, you know what? We'll pay for you to have a upgrade to a, what's the largest garbage can, ninety-five gallon or something? Get a ninety-five gallon garbage can, but you need to maintain the, the dog waste pit. Yeah, it just seems like something that it's a win-win. The people walking their dogs have a place to throw their garbage, it makes it very easy and convenient.
Or if there's another, enough public property interspersed in the walking paths, are, are there any public spots at the head of the street or anything where we get the city?
There, there are certainly places that are in the city's easement, but then the city has to maintain it. And, you know, at least the ones I've seen online are, they're like eleven gallon, they hold thirty-five bags of dog poop or something, which is not very much. So let's try to think about a solution that doesn't cost the city a lot of money. The city might even be able to negotiate with, with West Valley Recycles to basically include that as part of their agreement, where they empty a slightly larger can for one home or how many homes have dog waste bags, is that two, is this two micros specific for this group?
I think so. The, the Las Gattan's that are the damn trail, don't they have waste disposal? At St. Joe's at the base.
They have, they have bags. They have, as good as the, the sona.
And you'd find piles of the bags on the ground.
Yes, they're on my home, too, and frustration will vary. That's something they put in their bag, probably just a big leap in evidence.
Yeah, if you make it more available, then they're more likely to.
Well, yeah, the worst is Dave's Avenue, where Peter lives, you know, at the top there, that's just a what do I use the right word?
Dumping ground.
Yes, dumping ground, thank you.
But sort of along those lines, I also thought it'd be kind of cool to have some benches around the city, because you guys are all young, but I'm getting kind of old. As you get older, you know, you walk for a few miles, it's kind of nice to, to sit somewhere, we don't really have very many benches.
Well, other than Dave's Avenue, where do we have sidewalks?
It's not where we have sidewalks, it's where we have benches.
Well, we can't put benches in the middle of the street, they need a.
But we can put them on people's property if they volunteer.
Okay.
Or we can put it in our east, if it's volunteered. So.
Kind of like a little public library about a bench, although if you put a bench, then people might sleep on the bench.
Yeah, they might, they might also sleep on, you know, on your lawn, but. Hey, I'm.
Bitches are really nice, I, I get the feel for walking.
A lot of cities have benches, we, we don't really have much of that. Yeah, I think it'd make the city a little more walkable and pleasant, yeah.
If you know anyone in your neighborhood that's civic-minded and would be amenable to something like that, it might be good to identify the homeowner that's willing to install rather than have the idea and look for homeowners that are willing.
Well, if, if it doesn't cost the homeowner, the city's willing to pay for the installation.
Right.
Of it.
Yeah, and people do do those little public libraries, it'd be a little more permanent, but.
I, I think it's a chicken and egg thing. If the city were now saying, hey, one thing we're contemplating is if anyone is interested in volunteering in front of their property to host a bench, the city will install it. You know, you install a relatively maintenance-free bench and it hopefully goes years or anything needs to be done. Yeah, yeah, I like that idea, but I understand that people might have concerns. But I, for all these things, is the appropriate action to put it on a future agenda and talk about it in more detail? Is that?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's, I, I think all four of these things are certainly worth that. And then we could tackle to a permitted time or something, not that we have that much to do. Okay, anything else?
Do we interface with the county about our roads at all?
So there are, maybe, most of the roads, public roads are city-maintained, there are new sections of roads that are county roads that are within the city limits.
And is there any sort of upkeep or do they only address them if we come, if we go to, does it take our going to the county to say there's an issue or do they do periodic maintenance?
So they would have a similar pavement management program as we do and would identify streets in need of maintenance and prioritize them through the same process that we do, of course, much larger scale. And then any, you know, concerns of potholes or, or other things that may come up would be referred to the county.
And you might be surprised to know that Ridge Press is a county road.
Yes.
Oh, it's it.
Yeah.
And so is Dave's Avenue off of Highway nine. Up until I think a little bit past Constitution or right around Constitution. But yes, Ridge Press, too, which is surprising. And then a lot of the roads, particularly, I say south of Highway nine are private streets also that are, again, maintained by the homeowners that they serve.
Someone was reminding me today, I didn't go back and look at it, but that the county has an obligation to have an evacuation plan. And probably doesn't at this point, but that might be something we could approach them about. Because that seems like a roads matter. I would have to go back and look at what the legal requirement is, but someone I was talking to was referring, does that ring a bell?
So I believe the county would have the same obligation as the cities do, there's a few state laws that do require identification of evacuation routes and streets that that don't meet standards for evacuation routes and then generally cities would, would want to address those, so, but again, because of the cost, generally of that type of work, it's something that, that happens over the long term. The city is currently in the process of updating our general plan. The whole general plan is on schedule to be completed in about a year. However, because of the evacuation of and wildfire concerns, our consultant has moved up the safety element, which includes the evacuation route identifications. And so that draft document should be published next week. And then the council and the Site and Architectural Commission have a joint meeting on June twenty-fourth of this month to review it, open for public comments on the draft, to provide any feedback. And we're, the schedule, so what we're hoping is that the final version will be for the, to the council for approval this fall.
So the draft is coming out next week and then the joint meetings at June twenty-fourth?
Yeah, so we will, we'll email you. It'll be on the social media and on our email notification, but we'll make sure that the commission is, is notified specifically also.
That's great.
What other sections are there in the general plan?
Now, off the top of my head, so there's a land use section. Now, I don't know why I can't, I can't think of them.
If convenient.
Our housing element is part of the general plan, so of course that will be updated because it's on a different schedule than the rest of the general plan. But that is one piece of it. Let me just look it up really quick. So there will be a land use element, again, housing, but that's already been, was adopted a year ago, two years ago, there's a circulation element, open space and conservation, health and safety, which is the one that, that we're doing first. And then, not really a separate element, but there is an implementation program for the whole general plan, which would have a, sort of prioritize the different goals. And the general plan is usually a document that is planned for about ten years.
Would some of the walkability issues we talked about be part of health and safety?
Um, I think it could be part of the circulation element. But now it'd be part in this.
To the extent we're doing goal setting, we could have a placeholder maybe for anything that comes up as a result of the evacuation.
For sure.
Anything that might require us to dig into it once we've seen it.
But should we, would it be reasonable to have it as an agenda item for the next meeting to talk about?
Yes.
And it might be interesting for any of us that are free to attend that joint meeting.
I sure do.
Nudge, nudge. And all four of us could be in the audience, right, or is there any Brown Act with, or how that?
Well, I believe you're going to be attending a public members, not as the Better Streets Commission, but we can check in with our city attorney just to verify that, if you are, all four are interested in attending.
And I, I might have to do it by Zoom, but I will definitely. Or in ten.
Seven o'clock, June twenty-fourth, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll work together to make sure all those items are on a future, future agendas.
That was a great question, that.
Do we have any public comments?
No, you can leave.
And I don't think any actions required, you felt with them. Agree to have it on a future agenda. So next is number three, where we're going to get a status update on various projects.
Yes, so the first project and we were able to kind of match together some fairly recent historical details for the Highway nine sidewalk cap closure. So between roughly, I think, Viewfield and Grandview, there was a gap in the sidewalks along Highway nine. And the city has several times in the past five or six years, looked for grant opportunities or other funding opportunities to complete the sidewalk in this area. We have not been awarded the grants and our other sort of funding. We have not been awarded the grants and our other um sort of funding avenues have also not resulted in any actual funding provided to us. Um, and that most recently in the last um fiscal year federal budget, our former congressional representative Hannah Eshu had um put in some money for this project. Um, it started out as a million dollars, was cut back to five hundred thousand, was cut back to two hundred and fifty thousand. And then none of the sort of community project um category of funding was approved in the federal budget. So that was nothing. Um, the mayor and I have um met a couple of weeks ago with our current congressional representative, Sam Ricardo. And his direction was pretty much, there isn't any community projects that are going to be approved next year. So they're not even asking cities for what they would like to seek because it's not. There aren't any um funds that are going to be allotted for that. Um, so we will continue um to look for any opportunities for grant funding for this project, but um until we find them, it is pretty much at a standstill because it's past. And then um so it's sort of what we were just talking about.
I've got a couple of questions then.
Okay.
Um, one is, um, do do you feel we have the staff and resources to go after grants and know about grants or is that a a severe limitation because of our small staff?
It is a bit of a limitation. Um, and um however, with our um Donia, our consulting engineer has been here for about six months now and has definitely um have gotten caught up on a lot of um issues that needed to be caught up on. And we were actually just speaking earlier this week about um you know, keeping our eye out for grant opportunities. We were going to reach out to Los Gatos and see what if there's any joint opportunities or you know, just if there's anything they might want to partner on um as well as um, Donia had mentioned that the majority of grants that are available for street or sidewalk um projects are through the VTA. So we will be um looking for those opportunities and applying for um whatever we may qualify for. Most of the grant opportunities are for um projects that are more higher density or transit oriented than we have, but um, we will definitely be gearing up, looking for what is available and submitting for anything that we can. Might see what happens.
I know, I mean, sometimes there's extra money, like what happened with the the Highway nine to Los Gatos Street Trail Connector.
Mm hmm.
And um they were ready to go and some other projects had had not worked out and Los Gatos said, we can do this, we're ready to do it. And so they just bought it almost automatically, got the money to build that.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that definitely um very good timing for them. The some of the difficulty or the risk in that is sort of what's happened to us with the Highway nine project is that you prepare plans. And then by the time you get a grant awarded, there's standards that have changed and need to be revised. And so just the the preparation of the plans is also quite expensive for that type of a project.
What is the estimate for completing that gap?
About a million dollars.
Really?
From, and that was an estimate from two years ago.
Is it accurate to say that part of the reason that's so expensive is because Caltrans was requiring a wider sidewalk due to a new standard than any of the surrounding sidewalks? So I mean, one thing we talked about um was trying to lobby Caltrans to allow us to, I mean, it doesn't make sense to have that be wider than everything else. Um.
Was the width going to be sticking out into the road essentially, or was the width going to be toward the residences, towards the residences?
Here it can't go into the road there.
What distance does that get right then?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I did an estimate of a distance measurement on Google Maps, so I'm not that sure how accurate I was. But what I came up with was just under eight hundred feet.
Yeah. So a thousand dollars for it.
And that does include retaining walls behind the sidewalk um with the widening um that that Caltrans was was requiring or is requiring. It also includes relocating fire hydrants and relocating a utility pole.
And so treacherous.
And several treacherous, yeah.
If they budge on the retaining wall or you know, the the width part, if we persuaded them that it's better to have a continuous sidewalk of the same width than no sidewalk at all there, how much of the cost would that differ?
So in twenty twenty, I believe it was in twenty twenty, um, when Jessica was here um in anticipation of applying for a grant, she had the original plans prepared. So of course, that was five years ago, so can't compare the cost today, but it was about six hundred thousand dollars there. But of course, construction costs have really increased. So I'm not sure how much of the increase is due to the cost of construction increase and versus the expanded.
Isn't any event in either snare, we don't have the funds right now.
Yeah, I'm sure the six hundred thousand dollar estimate would be quite a bit for.
Yeah, but if we got eight hundred thousand from a new grant, we might say, hey, we have eight hundred. Can we do our narrow sidewalk?
Yeah.
If money.
I think I think Jessica worked with outside consulting agency to try to convince Caltrans at the time to not make that requirement that she didn't have any luck. So it's not as easy as it, even though it's common sense, it's not as easy as it sounds.
And I think um when, after Jessica left, when Dawn Witherley was here, I think he had the same effort with the same results. Okay.
But if we somehow somebody gives a good connection with Caltrans, just keep it in the back of your mind.
Yes, I.
For sure.
It is difficult having a community that's bisected by state highway and having no one identified there where you can talk to. Those are lots of challenges.
Yeah.
And when when building something like this, you know, I'm not sure what the dimensions are, but if Caltrans, Caltrans is requiring six feet of width and the rest of it's four feet or something like that, can we build out on our way to building six feet, four feet or whatever the current width is?
It's certainly something we can talk to them about. Um.
Without talking to them, just saying, we're going to build it to meet their standard. And we just start off.
It's their property, it's their right of way, made or inherit from them.
Right, so, but we 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 get, can we get the permit saying this is what we're planning on doing and then you, that that all construction goes in stages. I just.
How often does someone from Caltrans actually come out? I don't know. We don't have visibility into that.
Well, it would be nice if the um lights in the crosswalk across Highway nine were operative on this side of the street. They're not, they're only operative on the I'm not sure what direction it is, but the other.
That's all it's that.
Or the Greenwood or the Greenwoods or somewhere on there. Um, yeah, so if you're crossing that street, you're doing it at your own risk. There's no lighting flashing or anything of that nature in the crosswalk.
So is there a light stall that's not currently operational or?
Yes. Been that way for two years.
That seems something strange that we ought to be able to get fixed.
Do you recall, we had a consultant um look at that a couple of years ago. I think they complained that they were kind of substandard lights to begin with.
Well, I don't.
I don't know. Maybe we could add that to uh, it it was the people that uh the consultants that worked on the bike plan.
Well.
Um. So maybe we could have that be on a future agenda.
That'd be great.
But I don't think Caltrans takes responsibility for that. I think um some community group paid for it or the city paid for it. Is that, does that sound right?
Um, I'm not sure, but I wouldn't be surprised.
Hmm.
Um, and I think my personal opinion would be if you cross with the lights flashing, you're also taking your place into your outside lane.
But yeah.
But the lights would be better than.
To get around time, that is a. If you look where you do. People tell me that that want to cross that they don't cross there, even though that's the most convenient
Yeah.
way to do it.
Yeah, I don't think Caltrans authorizes a whole lot of crosswalks over there. I just.
It's a good idea.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much for that information.
That's okay. Um, so the next item we had in the report is the upcoming year's um pavement management project. And the report has the list of streets um that were identified for um improvements um for the upcoming fiscal year um as well as the budget um which will be considered for final approval by council next week. But these are our um estimated revenues um that the city receives that would go towards the street maintenance project. Um, one opportunity we may have next year, because our street in the world of street maintenance and public works, our projects are very small. So what happens um is we do have a very high percentage of the overall cost is in the traffic control and the setup and the mobilization and of the contractor. Um, with this year's project, it was almost half the costs. Because the projects are, those are generally fixed costs, because our projects are so small, it eats up a lot of the budget. Um, in speaking with the Los Gatos town manager in a casual conversation, so we'll have to to follow up and confirm with them, um, but he did offer that perhaps we can put out um a um what what you would call an alternate in the bid of Los Gatos's street maintenance project next year. So we can sort of tap on our work. The contractor can bid on all of it. Together, we would pay our portion. They would pay their portion and do the work at the same time, and that may be able to save us a lot of those costs to get more actual street work done for the same money.
That's a great idea.
So, yeah, so hopefully that works out. Again, it was a casual conversation, but we're definitely looking into it. Um, I did run it by our city attorney and she thinks it's definitely something that's feasible from sort of a public works contracting perspective. All right. So that would be fantastic. On the third item is the Bruce Avenue Traffic Calming. So um I understand in October, the commission had um heard from neighbors on Bruce Avenue who may or may not be interested in speed humps along the street. And the city does have a traffic calming um petition process that if um neighbors in a certain area would like speed bumps or some other sort of um traffic calming measures, they can submit a petition to the city. Um, we surveyed the residents in the neighborhood and see um how many support and oppose. And if two thirds support the project, then we would put in, in this case, the speed humps um for temporary speed humps for one year. Revisit it after one year and see if if um we should put in the permanent speed humps. I was hoping to have the final answer on Bruce Avenue for you tonight. However, we are waiting to hear back from one resident to confirm what their vote is. It was um a little unclear and that vote will sway the decision.
It's that close.
Yeah, it was that close.
So they do, um, they did submit a timely vote and it just needs to be interpreted?
So they submitted a vote in support timely with a note saying but not in front of their house. And that provided as a speed hump next to their property.
That's awesome.
So with that placement, do they still support or not is our question. Um, Glazy actually um visited the property a couple of times to try to catch the homeowners to clarify and they weren't home. So we had sent them a letter and asked them to respond by next Friday.
Was the speed up in front of their house or just there?
On the property line between their house and their neighbors, but it is the side that their driveway is on. So it would be certainly not in front of their driveway, but a few feet off.
Well.
Um.
And can you move it five feet to the side so they can?
Then it's in the neighbor's front yard. We tried to place them along property lines, you know, so it's not directly in somebody's front yard. And and that placement was included in the letter that we sent them, asking them to vote in support or oppose, so.
You're getting into trouble one way or another because technically it's in front of their house if it's on the property line. So.
Which is why we want it.
Yeah, but if you clarify and they say, okay, yes, then somebody else will will say, well, no, they actually said no. Now you're allowing them to do a vote later when everyone else is not allowed to vote anymore. So you have potential liability there.
And we had an irate homeowner um last time we went through this exact same process, um that did not want him, just so we that would probably happen.
And that that will, so we followed a similar process um as was done, I think it was in twenty twenty one, we sent out a letter um gave a deadline. The property owners that hadn't responded at that point, we sent out a second letter. And then the property owners that didn't respond to the second letter, I think there were only two.
Two.
Um, Glazy visited their properties, I asked, you know, gave them an opportunity and they did both submit um a petition. And so now that we have it all and it's down to this one, we're waiting for that. But my expectation is if it doesn't go the way somebody ordered, they're not going to be happy with the situation. And for the city's perspective, we'd rather get everybody's opinion rather than say, oh, you missed it that well.
Sure.
And is it a courtesy to ask everyone to vote or could we, as the city say, it's safer, we need to do it regardless of how they vote or, you know what I mean? Is it a courtesy or a legal thing?
So this is part of our traffic calming policy. So the city has a policy where um a neighborhood could ask for traffic calming measures on their street. And so that's the case here. Um, part of that process is um a speed study was done to see um if cars are speeding to determine if there is a need for some sort of traffic calming behind Bruce. And it it just barely qualified. And because the speed limit on Bruce Avenue is twenty, not twenty five, so it's a a lower speed that yeah, it 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 just qualified for traffic calming.
So just background is this committee with, working with Jessica, created that policy, put it in place.
Oh.
And a big part of the reason is we didn't want to be dictating what's going to happen. We wanted to make sure that the people on that street took ownership of it.
That seems really important.
And and the hearing we had was well attended and people had very strong opinion to one way or another. Those agree.
They do.
Yes.
And so on the last item that we had um for you tonight is the completion of the twenty twenty five, the current nearest pavement um management project. It was completed, I think perhaps just last week. It included some um pavement work on Twin Creeks and West Ellenwood as well as some signage and striping improvements along the Dave's Avenue S curve. And um Donia is online tonight. She has some before and after pictures to kind of show what the work that was done.
Hi, Donnie, you're on mute.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks, Diana. Uh, let me reduce this. Um, we had um our fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five annual pavement project um completed just last week and I will briefly go over um the project highlights and the improvements that were completed. The city council adopted resolution twenty four thirty nine oh seven last year, June twenty, uh, June fourth, uh, to adopt a list of uh projects for this upcoming year. And we worked really fast. We tried our best to get this project out to bid and completed in the twenty twenty five fiscal year. So we put out the project out uh on, to advertise on April fourth. Uh, gave it about three weeks for bidding process, April twenty eighth, bids were opened. We received two bids and the lowest responsible bidder was Radius Earthwork. And um on May fifth, we executed a contract with them and a notice to proceed was issued shortly after. Construction started mid-May and we did have a tight deadline for uh Radius Earthwork to complete the work within um a a pretty short, but we also had a short list of streets, so about two weeks. And we included Dave's Avenue as an added alternative if uh depending on how the bids came in. And if that piece was awarded, we uh provided another eight working days for the contractor to complete. Both the bid, the base bid project streets and uh adult uh the alternative um which was Dave's Avenue. Um, so yeah, uh like Diana mentioned, last week we closed out uh the con- construction portion of the project, right now we're at the phase of. Final closeout, which includes uh staff going out to the field, walking the site with the contractor. And doing a very um detailed review of their work, the items that were installed, the quality of um. Materials and um there is a a short period until acceptance and uh which is why we're gonna give the. The rest of June and maybe July, a couple visits to uh basically be prepared for an August city council acceptance of the project. After acceptance, there will be a one-year maintenance period where the contractor is still required to um. Uh, well, we could hold on on to a small bond for their maintain- uh a maintenance bond, meaning. Uh, sorry, a warranty bond, which is, if there's anything that breaks or, you know. Pavement cracks, they're they are required to come back and give us uh, you know, the product that we specked out. And so pretty much this time next year on August will be uh their one-year warranty will be expired and the project will be in the. Final acceptance and conclusion. As mentioned, uh we had a pretty uh short and sweet project, Twins Creek Road um uh West Ellenwood Avenue and Dave's S Curve. And this is a quick map. Uh, the work that was performed in, yeah, next slide is fine, thank you. Um, the work that was performed at the three locations actually vary a little bit. Um, as Diana mentioned earlier, the pavement project is um an annual project that most cities uh. Manage out of the Engineering Public Works Group, the streets are selected based on PCI, there is a mix of. Um, uh lower street PCIs to be treated with more um robust improvements. And then there is uh maintenance type work, which are for your mid-range uh PCI streets. And um and the goal is, and then there's cracked ceiling, so there is a final treatment where you just maintain small cracks. On a regular basis through an agency so that the pavement investment goes as long as possible. And this year's project, West Ellenwood Avenue, which is, you know, a short little segment right here, was our. Um, more robust treatment and we basically could have only afforded one street, it was already approved um and we followed that list. So the West Ellenwood received an asphalt overlay, a seal and re-striping which um. Actually, I'm sorry, the re-striping, this uh was a cul-de-sac, there was not much striping because. Where the street ended, it became another agency's uh right of way, so we didn't actually have to stripe out of West Ellenwood. And I'll show some pictures later, uh Twin Creeks is the next level of um. Uh, treatment uh less than an asphalt overlay, uh Twin Creek received a slurry seal. And a a striping complete refresh, there was a couple areas that were pretty badly um. Uh, in need of a deep lift, which is a section that we basically. Uh, removed and did a base repair and rebuilt it and then did the slurry seal over it. And lastly, Dave's Avenue is a project that was our added alternative. And this was mostly to address the safety issue that we've had on Dave's Avenue. And what we uh wanted to do because we didn't have the funding to do. Uh, neither asphalt overlay or a slurry seal. On Dave's Avenue, what we did was simply remove the existing striping um that was on the pavement. And we installed new thermoplastic uh which is a standard uh treatment for striping. Uh, it's reflective and it lasts a lot longer. And we uh installed delineators, um signs up to current codes and made minor modifications to some of the existing bumps and I'll explain that in a later slide. Okay, and here's a quick shot of an a pavement section on Twins Creek before. And uh after, so just slurry seal alone, you could see what a big difference it makes. Um, yeah, so. If there was a need, we would have done asphalt, but the street based on a program called Street Saver. And like Diana mentioned, we have a consultant that is funded through MTC that helps us. Run the Street Saver software, uh pull streets uh current pavement conditions. He uh or his company, they basically evaluate all of our streets on a regular basis and so we have a really. Great and detailed spreadsheets of all of our street segments, their condition and we. Kind of use that recommenda- that data to kind of prepare our recommendations. In addition to a mix of low PCIs to bring our very low PCI streets up. And this is an example of a street that was recommended for slurry seal. And that's what it got, and here's a before and after of that treatment. Next slide. Hey, uh here's a before of Ellenwood and an after, kind of the cul-de-sac, it is the. You could see a lot of cracks and actually it's a lot worse, it was a lot worse throughout the segment. And here's an after picture, so this uh on the West Ellenwood, we. There was some utility monuments and um manhole lids that needed to be raised, there was a section that had. A puddling issue that was a drainage issue and the contractor made a great recommendation of how to. Even out that pavement section to help us kind of drain the street to avoid that puddling. As part of this project, so we took them up on that, so that got repaired as part of this project. But as I mentioned, since it's a cul-de-sac, there is no standard for striping here, so it's just the pavement treatment that um the West Ellenwood got. And regarding uh Dave's Avenue, I wanted to start off by just sharing two exhibits that are in our um. Uh, that were included in our pavement project. And these are from California's um MUTCD uh latest edition. And this is the recommendation of uh the state and of for, you know. Speed bumps are pretty much in residential areas, so it's not that because it's the state, it's in state's right of way. That these are the recommendations, these are the recommendations for residential streets if there is a speed bump, speed hump. And so as you could see, the standard with with the word hump ahead or bump ahead is no longer present. And instead, the 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 MUTCD recommends. Uh, these uh long kind of uh longitudinal lines building up to the speed bump. From both directions and um. And even kind of the width, the signage, so this was included for our contractor to follow. The advanced warning and markings for speed humps that you see in uh figure three B dash thirty one. And then likewise, on a curvature um or, you know, there there's example of signage that is required at a turn. And since this segment, we wanted to be lower speeds instead of a twenty-five miles per hour, our signage um, you know, was modified by the contractor to say fifteen miles. Per hour, the Chevron um signs are placed um. You know, in each direction, so if someone is coming up. The Da- Dave's Curve, the the Chevron should be placed for the driver approaching. And likewise, if a driver is heading down away from the curve and going downhill. Then the Chevron signage is placed in an angle that the driver should see. The arrows for the curvature are required, the speed limits are required. And we uh follow this uh as mu- as closely as possible without uh adding any more than this bare minimum requirements. In our project as well. Next slide.
So. Can I have a few on the last one? The um.
Sure.
How often, I was, I love the intersection now, by the way, if I hear the S curve, I think it's great. Um, I was somewhere else in town, I can't remember where, and the lines leading up to the hump had really faded and they were hard to see. How often will we paint those? Cause everyone dries over it.
Oh, great question, honestly, that was when Diana and I went out to the field and she said, what do you think about this? What can we do? Low cost. Yet improve safety, we have, you know, residents yet and cyclists using this road. It was my first recommendation or is my fir- I guess first recommendation that that of what could be done is. Uh, re-striping or refreshing striping is a low cost. Technically, right, the cost of paint or thermoplastic. And um like we've mentioned so far in today's meeting is that. We don't have a plan for any work unless it falls under the pavement project. So when we share the list of upcoming streets, um you, you know, the the. So the kind of how Dave's came together, if there is a location that there's a safety issue, the the striping has faded. The pavement condition doesn't meet the requirements to kind of get bundled in the next few years' work. We could, if Diana's okay with it, we could add specific sites just for a refresh. And that's basically how Dave's Avenue kind of came together as part of this year's project was that. Initially, it was not intended for pavement improvement because it's pretty decent pavement-wise. But because the sign uh, or in this case signage was not to code, striping had faded. And there was uh, you know, safety concerns around speeding, it all kind of came together, so to answer your question. If you, you know, we could, uh if you, you know, want to share that location with us, it would be, I would be, I would like to know where's. Uh, necessary striping has faded because that's maintenance. And in our project, we have like urgent ones that are just, you know, the street's falling, there's potholes and we need to attend to it. And then there's maintenance of striping and I think overall we want to even upgrade or kind of come to code with our signage. Around town through a different project, so I hope I answered your question.
Good, I'll I'll pay attention, next time I'm through wherever that was, I'll I'll make note. I think with the fresh paint, everything, I think it works great and the cutting off the edges so people aren't going around it. Um, I don't know how it is for bikes, but for cars, I think it really serves the purpose it's intended for.
Thank you, that's great to hear, appreciate that.
If I can share a story, there's, I have a friend and neighbor who's known to be a frightening driver. And he literally complained that he couldn't go around the speed law. I told him that's the whole idea.
We were getting a lot of different confused drivers too, like what are you gonna do here? What is going on? Anyone who's willing to have a chat, I pulled, you know, you know, we stopped and talked and they spoke and. At the end, almost anyone that I spoke to in person during construction were actually pretty happy and pleased and kind of looking forward to what the improvements were gonna look like. But we did, like you mentioned, we, I saw firsthand drivers. Driving around the the contractors, striping um this yellow center line. They went around, so there was a segment that the yellow kind of went into a C shape. Because the driver just whipped around this huge equipment that is uh pouring the paint. And so anyways, I had to have the contractor come back and clean that up and redo that section, but um. I, so here's a, uh, so this is Dave's uh Avenue, I called it first speed bump because it's the first one from the top of the hill. Um, and this is kind of what it was looking like before, so there was this sign bump, speed limit, a turn sign. And that's not standard and I don't know if I included in my previous exhibit from MUTCD, what you see on this side, which unfortunately part of it got cut off. Is uh, you know, the speed uh bump, the arrow pointing down and the speed limit at the beginning of the bump is. What the requirement or the the correct placement is. And in this particular case, we felt that this property's uh. Location to their front gate, just literally walking in was going to be where this first corner, I'm sorry, I guess you, my my mouse, you guys are not seeing. Um, the first little uh delineator that you see would have been the location for that uh the sign that you see right up front on the after picture. So uh we basically, I looked up some other examples and kind of, how much can we shuff- shuffle or shift this? To still serve the purpose of a driver approaching to see the signs. And this is basically as close as I could get it and be a way to kind of respect this property's uh entrance to their proper, you know, gate. So this is an after of the first speed bump, you'll see that this sign on the uh left side was not there at all. So the 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 signage that we had was substandard, was minimal and was not complete. And the location was off altogether. On the before picture, the hump in this picture you could see was uh uh grinded off. But we did have the word hump here, as you noticed in the previous uh exhibit from Caltrans, that uh pavement marking is no longer. The recommendation, it's what you see on the right side with the lines leading up to the bump, this the fresh strip center line. And um obviously, the big item on this project was adding the four delineators um. And as you know, the reason why, if you didn't know, the the reason why we had to trim down this bump was um for two reasons. This street was striped to be twelve feet wide as in the existing condition. Um, nobody, no local jurisdiction by today's standard is uh. Striping their lane widths to twelve feet, even Caltrans on the freeway, it's less than twelve feet. So we had a street that was wider than a Caltrans highway. And so there's streets that, I mean, sorry, there's resi- uh, you know, agencies that narrow their residential streets as um narrow as ten feet. Ten and a half and eleven. And so what we did, and I thought this was a good step in the right direction because I didn't want to take too much of the bump. Is we went from twelve feet to eleven feet, so the street got a little bit narrower, so if you're out there. You'll see the the grinding of the old stripe. However, the new stripe is a six-inch stripe, so that kind of took a little bit of it, so to the eye, it doesn't look too bad, but it is a one-foot narrower. Now than it was before. And then we also noticed with that narrowing and I really wanted to provide a minimum of a five-foot width uh opening for this. I know we want to say it's a bike lane, it's technically not marked for a bike lane, we know cyclists use it, it does not connect and this is like a different day's conversation, but. With the goal of cyclists moving through here, we would need it to be a minimum of five feet, which. In our earlier conversation about why Caltrans will not give us a narrower sidewalk, I've had that battle with other agencies, representing other agencies. And if they let one agency install anything below their standard. Every agency is gonna come and say, well, you did it for Monastery, you know, here's an example of where you made an exception. They will not budge, they are, it's, they are the guiding or, you know, they are the regulators of. Uh, standards and the standard is a minimum of five feet, so with that, the bike uh lane, I wanted to make sure we placed these. To ensure an opening of five feet, thus I needed, we needed to trim any of the bumps that did not give us five feet, there were some. That um were okay. And the contractor was very surprised and kind of uh wondering how did the placement of these existing speed bumps. You know, how was it determined because it's not even, even based on our old twelve-feet lanes, they were not evenly poured. And I said, I don't know, but right now we're just fixing it, so just trim to the, and I, I thought I have a picture of the grinding in a different pa- picture, but um. So anyways, we grind it a little bit uh to ensure the the five-feet opening. And this is the after picture of the uh first bump. Okay, this is the second speed bump, sorry, there's a shadow here, but you could see we had a kind of like a left turn and a speed limit. Uh, past the speed bump and um, you know, the behind the trash bin. And on the side across the street with the pink flower, flowers or bush here, there is uh nothing actually. And so again, um the after is what you see to the right, uh we placed the four delineators, trimmed the uh part of the. Speed hump, uh smoothed it out so it's flush to the existing pavement. And uh added speed bump, arrow down, speed limit, and it's double-sided on both, so when you're approaching. You'll see two signs, when you're leaving, you'll see two signs. I did notice many cyclists just get, using the full width of the street, but we were in construction. And I did see, hear and see people saying thank you when a- after they were installed and I was going back out for pictures and stuff. So I did see cyclists kind of using it, I saw some bigger groups all stay in the travel lane. It's whatever people are comfortable with, but I think um our goal of not having vehicles swerve around the humps. I I think this, you know, achieved it, I do have short videos of how simple the installation of these delineators are, these delineators are. I know it came up in last meeting, so I took a quick video and um. Um, yeah, so that's. yeah, so that's the second speed bump.
I remember where the one I saw was that was faded. It was coming down from Montalvo, so that's actually Saratoga. So your bump, the humps throughout town are probably just perfect. I started to, but I didn't. I didn't.
And here's the third, the third bump, and this is what we had as far as time before. Uh we have the bump, speed limit, uh right turn. We had the word hump on the pavement and that's about it. And I think up in that corner, you could see the one turn and maybe one Chevron up there. So um this is actually an example of a location. I loved our conversation earlier about vegetation above the pavement and, you know, visibility. So here, you won't believe it. It's kind of there's a natural sign hidden in that bush with the, you know, the flowers. I don't know the the species of these flowers, but we um unfortunately did have an issue with this location. We were debating on should we move it up a little bit like we did for the first bump, so it's more visible. This entire section has overgrown vegetation, trees, privacy screening, um and um there is no other place, so we basically put it where it should have gone. And I did send an email to PG&E to say you have some trees growing around your wi- overhead wires, hoping to get PG&E to to do a little bit of the work for us. And then likewise, I shared this with our uh building inspector Alan to see if there's a way we could get anyone that helps the city with landscaping needs to kind of at least make the sign visible. Um I have uh received some comments from the resident that lives here, so we um, you know, we may follow up on that, but um this is the third speed bumps um uh current condition. And I think uh that's it. This is Twins Creek. I just loved, loved their work. The contractor did really great. Um they were so happy. We had a short, short turnaround for this project. And we were happy they were willing to do it in such a short time. So part of when we received bids, I, you know, was sharing with Diana that it, we're a smaller city, the the, a lot of the bigger contractors, which this striping contractors uh what was Crisp, they do really large projects. And um it's that the primary or the prime contractor was a small business that paired up with the bigger company. And so together, we kind of got a a pretty good team. We got a lot of custom attention and I needed this and that, and they were very responsive. In addition, they had a pretty like uh a strong team supporting them. So these, the striping, this is the quality you will get in any of the Bay Area cities because Crisp does pretty much the whole city. Yet, like Diana mentioned earlier, we got really hit with uh uh the mobilization costs on this project. And when I was walking the site with the Crisp uh foreman, I was like expressing my frustration, like, hey, we are so small and cute. Why did you guys go so heavy on the mobilization? And um and and he just said, this is uh and it's a good point to, I'm sure Diana mentioned it earlier, we agencies that put their projects out to bid, the contractors are um you know, kind of offering their best deals because they're lining up work for the following year. When you're putting out a project in spring, they've almost been uh they're, they've been scheduled out for summer and pavement due to its nature has to be a summer project. So he, he just said, he said, we just throw numbers together. I've had agencies ask for exact breakdown of our mobilization fees. And we say it's a lump sum. That's how it is. So um hopefully, in our upcoming project, we can uh like Diana mentioned, pair up with our neighboring agency and find other ways to keep the mobilization cost trimmed down as low as possible so we could afford uh more of these uh maintenance treatments. And like you mentioned, this re-stri- refresh of striping as needed where the pavements are otherwise in good shape. And um um I think we have uh, yeah, we have a good team to kind of put that all together and get it out to bid.
Thank you for being so conscientious.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. So there's any questions? Otherwise, that was my presentation.
No questions. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that everything for status updates?
That is.
Is there any public comment on this request for public, on this agenda?
No answers.
The next item is staff comments. I guess staff just had plenty of opportunity for. Um committee mission reports. Um I will mention that we had the monthly DGA um BPAC, also it's county BPAC meeting I went to last night. Uh there's really nothing relevant to Monasterino. We talked, we got educational section on the county bridges. There's just under two hundred bridges that are in the national bridge inventory, any bridge over twenty feet uh this part of the national inventory. And almost all the funding for the bridges comes from the federal government, we learned. Um and then the other thing we talked about, um which I didn't have much to participate in, cause I don't know the area very well, was a uh re-striping, re- a pavement and re-striping project on Central Expressway. So that was way outside my area of expertise. Those were the two main things that we covered.
Thank you.
Um future agenda items, I think we have a handful already. Anything else? I guess we can reopen this. So I just gonna go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.